Antiques on York in Rockville, Indiana, 100 West York Street, celebrating our 10th year in business.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, well, thanks for coming, everybody. We'll do this quickly as we can. We'll get to approve some minutes. From November 6th and January 16th.
Motion, we approve the minutes from November 6th, 2022, and January 16th, 2024.
I'll second that.
All in favor of saying aye.
Aye.
Take a nester somewhere. All right, then we have payroll, an amount of $219,344.84 in Indian Hospital's security of $3,905.40. Then we have a... You want to go all at the same time?
Yep.
Then we have the February 12th payroll of $2,038,356.56. And then the Union Hospital's security of $3,875.46.
I make a motion, we approve payroll last quarter.
Then I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, then we need to acknowledge received payroll claims accounts payable report. An amount of $199,623.66.
There will be one coming next meeting. Go. We got two payrolls, but only one claim.
Okay.
So we have three here?
Yeah. You should have four.
Four.
Two, even hospital, two regular.
Two regular, two...
The hospitals only.
See, one of the hospitals.
Yeah.
What's the date today? Down, 2/5.
Pay you to acknowledge your received payroll claims in the amount of $199,623.66.
Yeah, I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
All right.
Okay. Jeez. That's a...
Still got one more to go, too, I think.
Yeah, accounts payable.
All right, then we have the claims in an amount of $831,414.64.
And I can motion, we approve the accounts payable claims in an amount of $831,414.64.
Second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There ain't going to be a lot of paper today.
I know. And some of it I can front and back.
All right. It's new business. Let me get a couple of things off here real quick before I forget about these while we're doing new business and then I'll add those knocked out. We had a request from two ladies involved with 4H. And the request is they are working on training in their 4H classes as service dogs. And they want to work with the service dogs getting used to elevators. In Park County, we don't have many choices on where to go. You get in the elevator to the courthouse. So they ask if it'd be okay if they brought their dogs to train, use the courthouse elevator. I have no problem with that. It's not going to be a matter of a pack of dogs coming in with a pack of kids and making a lot of noise doing that stuff. They're just going to bring them in and take them down the elevator.
Is there a time that wouldn't be good, though, possibly? That's the only thing I was wondering, like, of course, if something was going on or...
I don't, not that I'm aware of, anyway.
Are you aware of anything that would be a bad time?
Trials coming up, any to worry about?
They, but they come and go, so it's really hard to...
I thought people came all the time, anyway.
Yeah, I mean...
They'll just, they'll just...
I assume as long as they're not in the courtroom or in the, that little room where they put the juries.
They won't even be in the foyer. They'll just open the door, the dog sees different, go back.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with that.
Might tell the judge, I guess, but...
Then I make a motion, and we approve them using the elevator to assist with the dog training, service dogs?
Go ahead.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. I want you to know that I did deliver the grant to the government buildings in Indianapolis Wednesday morning. Had to be there by 4 o'clock Wednesday afternoon, so I took them over Wednesday morning. After I had a meeting in Terryville, came back, and then went to Andy's, got those done. So that grant has been delivered, seeking up to $100,000 to work on the Melcher Bridge from the Wabash River Corridor Heritage Fund. We have a request to use the courthouse as we've always done for National Day of Prayer on May 2nd from noon for about an hour. So it would be my motion, and we approve the Minister of Association, the use of the courthouse steps on May 2nd for National Day of Prayer.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And I have a request from the school superintendent. They have already applied for the Ready 2.0 grant. And what they're looking to do is to add to their corporation buildings, a building for childcare that has to be connected to the school, physically connected to a school building in order to be considered, but they are doing that. They have already submitted it, but they are still asking for support letters in case a question of it up or the need to refile. So I got a request here for Mike Schimpf to write a letter of support. I'm fine writing that. If you guys are okay with me writing a letter on our behalf of supporting the seeking for the Ready 2 grant for support.
Yep.
Okay. I don't need a motion for that, as long as you're okay. Minutes will show. I have talked with LTAP, and I've talked with Workforce and Investment Board at both, meeting at both different places about beginning the process to find a replacement for the highway superintendent that is retiring at the end of May. And you already gave me the authority, go ahead and start that. I just want you to know that I've met with them, and we are going to meet then this coming, in coming weeks. And create a job description, what we expect. And there's nothing that I would approve, that I wouldn't bring you guys first. I just want you to know we're going to be proceeding that. We are also still moving down that path of sharing a highway engineer with Vermillion County. In case you don't recall how that works in the state, once every county they have a highway engineer, they have allotted $40,000 for every county to use toward their highway engineer. We couldn't afford a highway engineer in only $40,000, because it's going to cost $120,000 or so to get a highway engineer. Two counties in the state, Randolph and Henry, have an arrangement where they share a highway engineer. He works four 10-hour days, two of one county, two of the other county. The state has decided to allow counties to use their $40,000 allotment each. So that gives you $80,000 to apply toward highway engineer that you can then share. So both of our councils have agreed with the concept of moving forward with that, if we can find someone that's going to be feasible for us. None of us are positive that there's enough work, and I've talked to several, in fact, I just had to go up to that meeting. I'm on the board there to see about feasibility. Some think we could benefit from one another, thinks there might not be enough work for one. But our investment will be in the $20,000 to $25,000 range, because the other 40 will come from the state. So there's a feeling of, the general feeling of the council, that for that investment, and we should certainly get that much benefit out of that highway engineer. So that they're feeling that we should try that and see. Understand that maybe we'll change our mind at some point, but they think we should go ahead and try to pursue that, so I intend to do that as well. We will list it on the LTAP website, as well as the Workforce and Investment Board. They use LinkedIn, I think, for their RFQs and that kind of thing, so that's what we do. But I'll keep you abreast of what we do going forward on that. All right, let me see, is there anything else that I have? Well, let's go ahead and talk about this study real quick. Bruce has got some emails. And there's a thing going on in the state. The Indiana Economic Development Corporation got a little ahead of itself, and they decided they were going to create a facility in the Lebanon area to attract some really huge business opportunities. Microchip, lithium batteries, I think, other things.
Really?
Billion-dollar industries coming in there. Trouble is, they don't have enough water in Boone County to support that kind of thing. So they began on their own, looking at the option of tapping the aquifer. We're talking not groundwater, we're talking about aquifer. Up to anywhere from 10 to 100 million gallons a day. And then that water, according to their plan, that was used and cleaned and put back, would then go on to Marion County and other counties that may need water downstream from Tippecanoe Aquifer. A lot of people are concerned about that, because nobody really knows if that's even a feasible thing to do, if water will do to the water tables. Some commissioners are really upset about the fact that they're even considering that, and the state's deciding to do that instead of local. The state says pretty much that it's not a local decision, because it's not groundwater, it's not well water, it's aquifer water. So they're in this struggle. I have been getting lots of, now I don't want to say pressured, but a lot of encouragement that we, as several have, that we pass an ordinance saying that we're opposed to it, we don't want to see. Well, I can't speak for you guys, but I can speak for me, as far as I'm concerned. I don't know if I'm opposed to that, because the governor has now hired the Indiana Finance Authority, IFA, to do a study, multi-billion dollar study, and I met with the man who's doing the study at the commissioner's conference. And he really doesn't have an opinion on it yet, if it's a viable thing or either. There not going to be one well sucking out 100 million gallons a day. There'll be several straws, as they refer to it, coming from different places to supply that water. But the IFA now is in the midst of this study to see if it's even a feasible thing. Nobody's going to start doing this. My opinion is, it's hard for me to be opposed to something that I haven't seen the study on it yet. So to me, we should wait until we see the study, and then make a decision, watch what our attitude is toward that. If it's going to be detrimental to us, then of course I think we would oppose it. But on the other side of that, the struggle, as Bruce mentioned before meeting there, is that it's local authority, home rule versus state rule on that water. But at the same time, I don't want counties upstream from us having the authority to make decisions to sell whatever amounts of water they want to, wherever they sell, that's going to impact us downstream from them. If that's going to occur, then I would rather there be a state agency deciding that and having a broader look. So right now, it's just up in the air. I don't know that we have enough information to make a stance on that. But that's what these emails are about, that Bruce has got and I've got. So obviously, you guys decide for yourself, but I'm not prepared to do an ordinance on that, saying if we are for or not. Spencer Derry, our senator, has already proposed legislation, making sure that this is a state-approved activity, that Indiana Economic Development Corporation just can't go do it on their own, even though they've begun, they've already been buying a plan, they've already started planning.
They've bought a plan, Lily's already built it, if I remember right.
Without any access to sufficient water. And so our question was, why are we using RISE? RISE has plenty of water over here. And the two things, three things, actually, we keep getting told, and I just had a meeting about this, had way too many meetings made. One of them was, we don't have the workforce to support those kind of jobs coming in. According to Workforce Investment Board, Area 7, that absolutely is not true, that we have a, we have perfectly fine adequate numbers and skill levels, he says, and we can be able to support that. That's what Workforce Investment Board says, and that's what they do. The other thing they said, well, we don't, they can't come to Vermillion County, RISE, because there's not enough housing. We understand that, and housing is a difficulty for people at that level of jobs, but it's that way all over the state. I'm sure that Lebanon doesn't have enough housing for those folks either, but I guess you're close to Indianapolis, and whatever those choices are. And then the third pillar of that dissatisfaction when coming to RISE is childcare, of course, and we're all in the same boat. So the same restrictions come up every place, and I've seen what those questions are about RISE having sufficient housing, childcare, and workforce to develop those businesses. I understand our shortcomings or our challenges, but I've not seen any numbers that say that Lebanon has enough to support all those things either. So that's kind of where that is being tossed up now. It's going to be ugly fight, but before it's done, but I don't think we're ready to make a position on it yet. You're the lawyer type, what do you think?
I think I'd rather have all the information before I make a declaration.
It's not like they're going to run out one day and bill it all of a sudden.
Well, it's not like declaring stops it necessarily either.
That's right.
So I mean...
Yeah.
What is RISE?
RISE is they get the old chemical plant in Vermillion County, it's like 1,000 acres over there, that they have, their government gave to them, they're trying to develop that. Nothing really has happened any yet. Scott Pitt has got a facility over there, and really, they have built a spec building over there, but nothing's really come of that yet. So they're still trying to develop that into something, and there wasn't really sure what's going to happen. So there already is a facility with adequate water, adequate rail, adequate four-lane highway, but it hasn't interested the state much, because it's too far to the edge, it's not centrally located, so we'll see. So if it's okay with you, I'm just going to hold off doing anything, but that's until we get a little more information coming from the governor's office. Okay, so that's all, that's all that's about, that, right? I just wanted you to read that, see what that was, what that's talking about, and then we can discuss that at some later date.
That's going to be an interesting legal case, though.
It is.
The home rule being challenged.
It is. So you get into the semantics of water. Are we talking surface water? It's okay if the counties want controlled surface water, but if it's aquifer water, you can't. So how far, how far down do you go with, before you get into the aquifer and not groundwater? There is a, oh, what's the word for it? It starts with an B. It's a type of ditch that actually has direct access, vest- vessel, vessel ditch. And the vessel ditch is holding, like a holding pond for water. My question to the guy who's doing the study is, and he was like, well, I don't know. I said, well, you're looking at sending that on downstream to some other county. I said, if it's a, if it's a 100 million gallons of water, we're looking at two 40-inch pipelines coming from Tippecanoe County going to Lebanon, that water's going to be used and then treated and cleaned and then sent back out. Why can't you just pipe it back to the aquifer where it came from? Or why can't you dig a vessel lake if you have to? 100 million gallons, this is more information you ever wanted to know. And they go, 100 million gallons is a football field-sized swimming pool, 273 feet deep. I did that math the other day, so I know it's right. That's how much water we're sucking out every day. But if you're going to build a lake, and that would go back, if you grow out a slope that has direct access to the aquifer, why don't you take it out and put it back?
Well, I would think they'd have a better legal standing piping it back to its original source, though, because that takes away the harm to the local community.
To anybody, yeah. They tried to nibble with us, they said, well, Park County...
They just don't want it.
Park County can use the water and sugar creek and those kind of things, hey, you have more canoes and stuff, you know. So, yeah, yeah, stroked my back a little bit, you know, then you're okay. So I don't know, it's just going to get...
Probably won't eat mustard if they have to go to court on it.
It is so big bucks that we are so insignificant in the eyes of this, we're talking billions of dollars of businesses coming in.
This whole thing was done behind.
Secret.
Everybody's back, nobody knew anything. Boone County people knew nothing about it, until all of a sudden...
The tip of the commission just got word that they were going to come.
Landowners were selling their land, all the farmers were selling their land. Didn't know why. They finally asked, I said, well, the state's coming around and offering big dollars and buying all this land. And ended up, I can't remember how many thousands of acres that the state bought, with the promise already to Eli Lilly and these others that you can build there.
And his question is, why?
And the commissioners had nothing, no involvement with it.
Nope.
And then all of a sudden, they did all that, and then they decided, where's not enough water? So they decided, well, we'll just bring it in from Tippecanoe County. Well, now the Tippecanoe County people are all upset, because they're afraid they're going to run out of water.
I went to a presentation, Brandon Kearns put on it, he'll come to us if we want to, too, just showing what he believes would be the impact. He's the head of the Wabash River Corridor Commission now. And he thinks that wetlands can dry up, he thinks that the water levels will go down in Wabash already, maybe like they were last summer, but all the time like they were last summer. But again, that's surface water, that's not aquifer water, so where's the sliding factor? Far beyond my pay grade, so way beyond me.
It's just interesting to see how it plays out.
It is. I can spill water, but I drink it sometime, but that's about it. Okay. So I will, and the guy was nice, he wrote a letter, he said, I understand you being concerned, you want to keep IFA happy, and you want to keep, you can only give the commission happy, because you want things for your county, that kind of irritated me. You said, I know you won't go along with it, because you want to keep them happy. Yeah, like, we're going to sell our people out, because I want a better deal than IFA. But I didn't say that, but I'll write him, I'll write him back if it's okay with you guys, and tell him that we're just going to hold off until we get a little more information before we make a decision on that stuff. Okay. All right, sorry I spent much time on that, but I wanted you to know what was going on. All right, let's go on down the list then here. Do we have a request for Alice cycle checks?
Well, I think Randy's got some, but he's not here yet.
Yeah, he has, he is.
Oh, okay. I see you come in, and I've got one.
Yours is One Step Software?
Mm-hmm.
What's it for?
It's a software they use for drunk court.
Okay.
And it's a grant that it has to, the council...
So the money's already there?
Well, the council has to do an appropriation. But once, it's...
How much is it?
$1,920.
I make a motion, we approve an Alice cycle check for drunk courts in an amount of $1,920 to One Step Software.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
What you got, Randy?
I've got one from Palm Escavating, about $79,200. And I got one from VS Engineering, $1,079.74.
Yeah, let's see those, we get the numbers right for the minutes if we could. Make it, you get it twice a day, man.
Oh, that's awful.
That's on the guy. I don't think I make a motion, no, here.
Let me see, two Alice cycle checks for Randy, one for VS Engineering for $1,079.74, one for Palm Escavating, $79,200.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do you want your check mail, Palm's check mail?
No, you can, it goes to that, it's not me, it's...
Well, does he want to come and pick it up, or do you want this mail?
I don't know.
Okay, go mail it.
Whatever you want to do.
And... On that Melcher grant, by the way, tell your boys that we appreciate them redoing the, redoing the contract on those, so we can...
I spoke with Cindy about it.
Yeah, good, good, appreciate that. Okay. We have American Structure Point, GIS Amendmented Use Agreement. Have you seen this?
It's for the town, they're wanting structure points, they're engineering firm, they're wanting access to GIS information.
Oh, okay.
Town of Rockville, sorry.
There's no reason for us not to do that, is there?
Not that I see it.
I think we've done it before, hasn't we?
Yep. So that's your motion?
Yeah, I make a motion, we'll tell the Rockville Structure Point to use the GIS.
Then I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
You can go ahead if you want.
Well, actually, we're talking about use, and we can do it anyway. We've got a letter here for an appointment to the solid waste, West Central Solid Waste District. Dan's been our appointee for all these years, and I make a motion that we reappoint Dan for another term at the West Central Solid Waste District Board.
And also George Es...
Oh, and I'm going to go as the proxy.
That means most of the time when I can't hardly make it, so George is my, and he has agreed to do it again.
Okay. So the motion will be for Dan to be our appointment, and George Nicholas to be the proxy.
That I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, and then we have...
Appointments, some of them we've already kind of done.
Yeah, yeah. Have you cooked me a syrup today?
I wonder, I've been wondering about that, is warm, is it...
It's not running at all, it's just really, really not looking good at all. But literally, you can see what it does.
It's the best full at the end of the month?
Yes. We'll be done by then.
You have everything tapped, you're going to tap?
Yep. I'm going to flood the test there, Mary Ann. All right, is there anything on these appointments that we are lacking, in these spaces we don't have filled?
I highlighted on the back page, I highlighted, so...
Not on mine, I don't think I highlighted.
I have that on my back page.
You just can't see it.
I'll overlay it, I'll overlay it on mine, I'll have it covered. All right.
If you look real hard, you can see it.
Inkeeper's tax commission, I was unaware, we were missing someone.
It was open last, last year also.
Well, I don't have anybody to suggest yet, so let's hold off on that, then we'll have a meeting coming up this month in the mola.
It's fine.
Hope you get an idea from the commission. There's 11 on the commission, and two of them from Town of Rockville. So there are just eight there, I'm trying to see who we're missing. I'm trying to go down the list. Oh, I think it is filled. There are three. John Benomo. I'm thinking, who's on it? That's not on this list. John Benomo, Cooper. What's her first name? Is it Chris? And... Trying to see, sitting around the table, seeing who they are here. No, maybe, maybe you are still missing one, Thurman's ours, Tim Thurman's ours. I'll find out, I'll come back to some of them. The other one is Angela Hatfield, licensed physician, is going to fill the open seat on the board. All the rest will stay the same.
The public library's got one.
Yep. So I'd make the motion that we appoint Angela Hatfield to the Park County Health Board.
And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Will you let them know when we approve these, if they check the view on that? And then on the Rockville Library Board, I have a request here to appoint Samantha Woodard to fill Alyssa Wilson's unexpired term. Their motion to approve that.
You want?
No, Samantha's already in there right now, I don't know.
She must not be. Must not be.
Elise has been gone for a while, hasn't she?
Yeah, that's what I think.
Well, but Samantha's term was 22 to 23.
Oh, I see, yeah, I got a highlight.
So we need to reappoint her, is that right?
Yes, yes.
So if that's your motion, I'll second it.
All fair and sound, okay. Yeah, I didn't see the 23 out there.
I was going to say, I thought Elise had been off.
I think all the rest of them are there then. So is there a motion to approve Commissioner's appointments as presented?
I've got a motion to approve Commissioner's appointments as presented.
I'll second that.
All fair and sound, aye. Thanks, man.
You can have that, you can keep that one.
I've got another one here. I still don't see that highlighting in there.
It's very, very light.
I saw it.
Oh, yeah.
You just have to have good eyes.
I can see it now, okay.
I feel like print color, it didn't print color.
Oh, it's that button thing, you know, we should like the button, I found out. All right, old business, George Smith here?
No, but he, he sent an email, it's for the K nine.
Okay.
And there's a quote on the back.
So our cost that we have, what we've always had, would be $1,800. So I make the motion that we approve the entry into the K nine coverage with George Smith and insurance covering the K nine, canons.
And I'll second that.
All fair and sound, aye. Cindy Todd.
Yeah, so Jim, you had asked, you know, maybe this is an opportunity for Partnership Park County to kind of refresh everyone on what their mission is and what we do. So I just have a few hopefully short things to share. So I will say, last week, we actually held a dinner for all the folks that have contributed to our organization through Partnership Park County, through donations. And that was celebrating our 10th year starting of operations, which.
If we, if the folks who don't know what Partnership Park County is that she's going to be talking about here, Cindy's our economic director, she, she's part of Partnership Park County. What partnership is, every county has a redevelopment commission. We had one for years and years, ours was pretty ineffective for lots of years. 10 years ago, some folks got together and they thought we should try to create a public private entity to do that redevelopment, that economic redevelopment work. So a partnership was formed and it's called Partnership Park County. It's supportive not just by the county, but local private entities as well. Cindy was hired to be the executive director, so that's the entity she's talking about. It was done 10 years ago, we just celebrated our 10 years and she's got some information to share about what's been accomplished in those 10 years.
Yeah, so in addition to that too, we do serve as a nonprofit organization, as a 501(c)(3). We are supported through some public and private dollars is what allows us to operate and do what we do. We are focused on, of course, support of our small and larger businesses. We want to see Park County grow. So our mission is any activity that makes sense through economic development or community development, that we support that, sometimes we manage it, sometimes we're cheerleader champion, various roles that we play, grant writers. We do manage a couple of loan programs, as Jim mentioned. I, my other role is Executive Secretary for the Redevelopment Commission, which allows us the opportunity to work with these loan programs. We do various activities for business startups, expansion and retention of jobs. We work heavily with grants and infrastructure projects. We work not only for the county, but also for the towns within Park County with our services. We also like to be, you know, the boots on the ground if a organization, again county or townwide, that needs some research, some definition behind things, to provide an information to the community because their, majority of them are going to be volunteer boards. Some of them do not have full-time paid staff and things like that, so we offer our services in that way. Work with broadband. During the pandemic, we did a lot of opportunities for various programs to support Park County. So just to kind of wrap that up, over the 25 years, we've been able to work on projects. It's brought over $25 million of investment into Park County, whether that be through grants, infrastructure projects, housing projects and various things like that. For our next two years, we do kind of a three-goal pocket area. We will continue to work on childcare. So if you are familiar, we've talked about a childcare grant that we received here in Park County through the Community Foundation and Community Action that is allowing us to add 32 seats. Eight of those infant, eight toddler, 16 preschool seats, they will be housed in the Head Start Building. They will be operated and managed through Community Action, but they will not be income-eligible seats for, you know, for income households. So we were excited to have that come, hopefully that will be happening in March. We also have an Early Care and Education Coalition that has been working diligently to network all of our childcare providers across Park County, learning anything we can, looking for resources for these facilities. We did have a spot open in Rosedale, which added 15 seats. So that was exciting for that portion of the county, so we're, we're going to continue to work on that. We've been working on housing inventory, there's a few opportunities for us there. We have a regional housing study that's already been completed. We have Thrive West Central, that's done. Some funding programs through another grant through Ready. There'll be a second round of Ready coming soon, likely to see more housing on that. We're also using some of the community foundations gift eight funding that they receive from the Lilly Endowment to do some further investigation on housing specific to Park County. So our goal there in regards to housing is, we understand that Park County has a large vacant rate of homes, which is, we're about 29%, our neighboring counties are more in the teens. So we see that as an excess here in Park County. We want to work on lessening that divide between our neighbors. We do know a portion of that is due to vacation homes, so, you know, areas where people are not permanent residents. We do understand that accounts for a part of it, but we, I think we should see that in neighboring counties at almost the same rate. We shouldn't be necessarily unique in that way. But if you drive around our communities, and we've specifically looked at towns that have full utilities, water, wastewater, and so we'd be talking about Modestimo, Rockville and Rosedale. If you drive around those communities and you see just a lot of empty homes, whether it's if someone's passed away, it's a family member in another state, or perhaps they bought it in a tax sale and it's set there. We're trying to look at strategies to address those types of properties. And our third big project in the next couple of years that we'll be working on is a more regionalized public sewer initiative for the northern part of our county, serving our unsued communities there. So that's some things we're working on and I hope that gives you enough highlights about what, what we do and what we've been working on and why we exist. We've been very fortunate to have some great partners along the way to allow us to continue to be into this 10 years.
And in that seeking was 32 seats for childcare. That's why we gave $53,000 of the art money for to match the foundation's. Thanks. Anything you need from us?
I could name a lot of things too, if I want to do that again. Yeah, I appreciate your support.
Okay.
There's a list.
Right?
There's a list.
Okay, well Cindy, Cindy's a rock star. If you don't deal with her, you just don't know, all the places I go, all the meetings I have, they all know who Cindy is and what she does for, for our, not just our community, but the region as well. But we are, we are fortunate to have her and I appreciate her, thank you Cindy. Okay, department reports, Randy, hang on a minute, let's go ahead and get Chris because Chris has got one thing and we can get him out of here, so.
Yeah, I actually wanted to get the commissioner's approval to go forward with a bid from CRS to purchase a new radio console. The cost for this is going to be about $188,000 and it's going to replace the console that we've had in dispatch probably for maybe 20 years.
Are those $911?
These, yes, this is 911, this is from the 911 account. And this isn't going to be the only cost, there's going to be other costs dealing with some new electrical work. There'll also be some dealings with power supply and stuff like that. But what this buys is 13, 13 radios and then the controllers and then the positions in the dispatch. And with that, we're not going to be, we're going to be closing down the alternate dispatch, which is already closing down because the console that's here broke and it's so old that no one will fix it. And so it's a similar console down there in, at the jail and what we want to do is replace it before it breaks. We went with this company, CRS is out of Terre Haute, the mindshare system. It's, it's a new company, relatively new compared to Zetron or Lordrola, but it's the same system that Putnam County just installed and I went over there and talked with the person who was installing it and their, their director there in Putnam County, he had nothing but good things to say about it. So we see it to be a good system, it's a Linux system as opposed to Windows, so it's a lot easier to integrate some of our other systems into it.
What kind of timeframe would change over?
The changer, what we'll do is that we'll have that new system all plugged in and up and running and we'll have one of the positions already set. And so it's, I'm thinking an hour at the most.
How soon though will that happen?
Oh, how soon, it's how fast we can get the radios. So it could be about three months, four months.
Great. Scary sitting on the edge of that one sitting there, so it's great to make that change, good?
Yes.
Good. I make a motion that we authorize the emergency management director to see that grant for that console.
It's not a grant.
He's ordered it. I'll second it.
All fair and sound, okay.
Thank you.
Yep. How many, how many bids do you go through for this type, how many bids do you receive for those types of things?
I got, I got four bids from three different companies.
So I guess I should name the company that we're taking the bid from.
CRS, Criminal Radio Service out of Terre Haute.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Randy?
I don't have a whole lot. I've got the guys working 10 hours a day, then eight on Friday. Going the way that's good. So we get some of the roads fixed up. There's a few out there, there's a few holes in them.
I asked Randy if we could start stockpiling the dirt burner before Miss Randy shared and council was okay with that, maybe before we get the stockpile.
Dirt burner shut down.
Again, huh? Were we able to get much at a time?
No. We're hauling 53s. Contacted one truck in company to get a price on hauling the 53s. That hurt bad. So stockpile 53s instead of dirt burner.
We went through this a couple of years ago when we hired trucks to haul in because we were spending so much time fetching rather than having.
We was putting on a road, didn't have time to really get it stocked by.
Yeah. Okay.
Three years ago, I think.
Nothing else?
We got a big one.
Yeah, we got.
Milestone Community Crossing Caving Project.
Did you ever hear any contact with that company that Dan was talking about that does? Did you hear anything from them or?
No, we said in the specs.
And did you get any back?
Maybe he said he's going to give these higher ups. It was three Friday and they wouldn't bid it.
No doubt they didn't, didn't they?
I'm not complaining.
Don't deal with that, huh?
It just looks a little better if we get two or three bids.
That's fine.
Keep you guys competitive.
You can go through these and then we'll go back and see if they have anything they're supposed to.
They generally do.
They know what they're doing.
Yep.
They stood a time or two.
I could say you'd been there before, so yeah. Well, we appreciate you, it's, it's just always amazing for us when we get a new, new road, new surface down and no seams and.
We appreciate you and the work for you and I know for what you did.
You know, I, and I.
Cindy stretched an extra mile out of it this year for us.
I know people comment about, oh, Park County, but that's just because you haven't been anyplace else. I drove Indianapolis a couple of times last week and you get just right downtown Dantville, 36, there's craters, craters in there. Then you get on, get on.
Washington Street.
Yes, get on Rockville Road over to Washington Street, drive down that going downtown, my God. I'm glad to see our roads compared to those things.
86th Street.
Well, we appreciate you, thanks.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody have a good evening.
You too. Jason not here, Julie not here, Katie not here. Oh, the other two things that we had requests for. Got a call from the art teacher, we've let them in the past, but either elementary or high school, art displays in the courthouse and then they'll come up and let take them back down, that's what this request is. So the request is for Rockville to run elementary school for an art display in the courthouse. I'd make the motion, we approve that.
Yeah, I'll second it.
All fair and sound, aye.
All right.
And Charles Davis?
Yes.
What you got, sir?
I'm Chuck Davis, been in Park County 23 years. We came here after I retired from the army and built a house on Raccoon Lake. We've had bank tight on Raccoon Lake, if you're familiar with the lake, you know what that is? It's a place to park your boat up against the shore.
And they, and they put them in.
Approved by the DNR.
Yes, they put them in, yeah.
Approved by the DNR is the key. Corps of Engineers, as you may know, in the last year has decided to take over shoreline management at the lake. And they've said to people like us, we'll grandfather you and you can put a dock in there, even though our property doesn't front on that. But in your case, Chuck Davis, you need a letter from the county commissioners because access to where your dock will be, there's an old road bed that goes there in our subdivision. Doesn't tie to anything else anymore, it's about 100 meters long. And that's where I parked my boat down at the bottom of that. The Isaac Redenbarger at the Corps of Engineers said, we have to have a letter that says that the county has not formally abandoned that road. In other words, it's still determined to be a right of way.
Do you have where he's talking about, Randy?
I'm sorry?
Really?
Yeah, it's, are you familiar with, I brought a copy where it's up in the map, if you want to look at it.
Yeah, let's decide today.
Do you know where Bernie Kraft used to live?
No.
Okay.
Go ahead and show them, let's, let's get this taken care of there because Chuck called, he was all nice about it, but I couldn't say it was okay without you guys being aware of what it was, that's why.
It sounds like we haven't abandoned the road.
He's just got to identify and make sure we haven't abandoned it.
He's got it for him, he's got the same situation.
Do you know where the golf course used to be?
His house is not.
Right straight across from the golf course is Raccoon Village. That's where it is.
He takes his little ranger. That's what I'm saying, I'm wondering if they're not going to.
Yeah, Walker Grant Road.
Yeah, there may be.
If you come back into.
You'd think if we had to, it was abandoned, but he needs a letter saying that.
Well, that makes it still a public problem.
Yeah, that's right.
Doesn't serve any purpose for anything except access to the lake for four spots down there. As it's, like I said, maybe 100 meters. It's an old county road bed that I think eventually went into what's now Tiki, Tiki Village. Because if you go over there, there's an old road bed and come down and I think that's the other half of it. So that's, that's the section. And the Corps of Engineers, I stick a little back where they say it has, we need a statement that says it has not formally been abandoned.
Now, probably has been abandoned.
I'm sorry? It's just a little, like I said, maybe 100 meter long. And the private property on both sides, this is core property. Well, it might be an extension of Redbud, this, the road turns right here and this is, this piece of property is owned by an attorney from Zionsville that we never see. If you know anything about Indianapolis, you'd know the guy's name. It's not well thought of.
The purpose of the letter saying it's not been abandoned is just to confirm that it's still public access.
It's just there.
And so if, if we were even in error that, Nick, I'm, I'm just guessing here, you tell me, even if we were in error of saying that it's never been abandoned, someone came forward and said, yeah. came forward and said, yes, it has, and here's the proof, it would just go back to being an abandoned thing then, right?
Yeah, I guess what I'm questioning is how do we tell them?
Yep.
There's no name for the road. I mean, how are we going to tell them, describe the road to them that it's?
You can, you can use, we have had a bank tie at the base of that road for 23 years. You can, you can use my name and say the road that accesses Charles Davis's bank tie. That's, that's the way they identify it.
Can I take a picture of this?
Yes, you may.
How quickly do you need that, Chuck?
Whenever. They, they, they're still in the process of approving all the stuff through the Corps of Engineers. I'm retired Army, I don't want to talk about the Corps of Engineers. We have had our rounds over here.
We were just talking about that. Are there going to be a lot of these coming before us?
Oh, yes. There'll be a lot of motion and a lot of activity. I don't know that there'll be a lot of this because there aren't that many abandoned road beds.
Okay.
Our, the history to this, you don't really care to get into all of it. Dr. Anderson, the surgeon from Terre Haute, owned all this property and the golf course years ago, and he's the guy that developed it. He developed it with the intent that all these would be private lots. That road was, we have no idea where it came from. I've been the association president out there a couple of times. I've seen all the plat maps. We have no idea how that road really originated.
Have you ever seen a county truck on it, ever? Seen a county truck on it?
No.
Never?
I've never been back in.
And you've been there half a century, so you would know.
There is no access.
And you have been 46 years, right? So you know.
That's right. Don't put it that way.
But anyhow.
That horse, that horse and bunny pulling that grader that you had if you're going to go out there.
The first one to come into the subdivision.
And you're over and out.
I am. I'm still walking around. What's up with that?
Mine will be.
Yours yours.
A lot better on the other end.
When you get a certain nature, you're proud of that.
I think so.
Right. Where the heck am I? I'm upside down.
So is this on the subdivision that gets access to the lake or the other side?
No, that's it, yeah. The roads to it are all flagged in our subdivision.
It's 71-year-old neighbors.
And so all the ties are going to that section of the lake.
Most, many of the properties, there were 71 properties that I haven't counted, but probably 40 have late flood access. Probably 30 of us that rely on bank ties.
Are you okay with identifying?
I try my best to identify it, yeah.
There are three properties under service by that road.
Would you do a line number down?
Here. Yeah, let me, I can just be covered. Well, no, you don't want that. They don't want all that property.
That way if I need more information.
Be glad to take you on a little tour if you want.
And those roads may be everywhere. They may have them everywhere.
Well, it's, the road is way back in the subdivision. You can't get to it without driving on all private roads. It doesn't go anywhere, it goes into the lake.
Interesting.
The core is the.
Kevin, you chose us a new church.
Unique about it.
It's going around, popping the property, I understand.
But anyhow, that's, my purpose is to ask for.
We can take care of that as soon as he figures out how to write a letter for that and how to describe that. We can take care of that for you.
Thank you so much.
Do we, have you, do we have your address to send it to, notify you?
Yes, I'll get it for you. I'll give it to you.
Okay.
I have it.
Thank you, appreciate it. You guys phone number, address?
I took the phone number down, so I can work with it.
All right. We get it done, then Chuck will just notify you, then we can figure out how to get it to you. You either pick it up here or whatever works for you. Chris Newcomb?
Yeah.
Thanks, Randy. Hey, you, you have, I meant, sorry, the day that I was telling them before meeting that I'm working with LTAP, like I told you, LTAP and Workforce Investment Board about getting, start finding someone to fill your shoes as best they can. Do we even have a job description for your position? Could I have a copy of that? If you give the Janey outcome, I'll stop by and get that. And then I want to sit with you sometime, you get time, and see what you would add to that. Because I know you have things that you do, I'm sure far beyond that job description that we're going to need to include, so. You'd be the only human on earth who would know what needs to be added to that, so I need your help on that. Appreciate it.
I think Mary Ann, the courthouse, they've got a copy of all of our job descriptions too.
Oh, but fine.
If you would, if you give the Janey, I'll get it, and then if you've got time, we'll just have lunch or something over through that. Or you just think about it.
I hope we still got it.
Okay. Might jot some things down and see what we need to add.
A computer went down a year ago or so. The new one's got nothing like old.
Okay.
I will look on, I'll look on my computer and see if I can find anything.
See if you can find something, so we know what you do.
We can find it.
Okay. Appreciate it.
Uh-huh, right there.
Mr. Newcomb, what do you want?
What's an approval for additional appropriation? For removing the dog, uh, dogging period?
Okay.
That's the council stuff.
Yeah, they wanted me to approach you about it too.
You want us to approve it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, if you could.
And what has been done, for another, another note, I know that we have agreed some time ago to provide art funds to do the wifi at the park, but I've never seen a number for that or anything. Where are we with that?
It was like $90,000. They've actually already started on the project.
Okay. We need to be getting that, something in writing to us to approve before we run out of money. I hate to get to the end of the year and find out. That's the first time I've heard that number. Roy's mentioned it a couple of times, but he never do a number. I didn't see $90,000 either, and we don't have $90,000 left, so we probably ought to be getting that done. So if you can get something to us pretty quick.
Yeah.
I don't know what we have left. We still have $90,000 left, but at some point we won't have, so.
Yep.
If you're in line, you better speak up, Betty, before it's gone.
Will do.
Okay, thanks.
I thought I had to advertise this in the paper before you meet with the council.
Yeah. And. Has it already ran?
It's already ran for this month, so it'll have to be next month.
Okay.
I'll, I'd make the motion that we, we approve the Rockville Park to enter into a contract with column excavating for $8,960 to do the required work removal here.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Right.
That's all I had.
Appreciate you.
Thanks, Chris.
I applied for the Ready Grant as well.
I knew you had. What were you looking to do with the Ready Grant money?
Uh, upgrade all the electric in the modern loop.
Do we have 50 amp out there?
No, it is, that's the oldest part of the campground, that's 30 and 20 amp.
Okay.
And they have to share it, so I was trying to get it to where they each have their own pedestal.
Yep.
It'd be 50, 30 and 20 amp for all the modern loop, and then upgrading some primitive sites.
Are you going to be upgrading 250 amp?
Yes.
Okay, good, because a lot of.
They have all three options. They have 50, 30 and 20.
Yeah, a lot of, I mean, all the A's.
They.
They like having 50, but they may not get it sometime.
Exactly. Yeah, so that's some of the projects. Getting six new cabins that are almost built.
Great.
And then a splash pad.
Okay. What are those cabins going, going for to buy?
About 15 to 20 thousand.
Where are you going to put the splash pad?
Uh, between the fishing pier and the beach.
Oh, not at your house?
No.
Just checking, see where.
My kids will be over there every day if it's at your house.
Yeah.
Well, it sounds good. You're doing a good job, but you know that already, but we do appreciate you. I, it's just been, I mean, we've had good people in the past before you, but you've been excellent, so I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Yeah, keep it up.
I picked up a new park truck for my guys tomorrow too.
Good.
2012, 20, 70,000 miles on it, and it's pristine.
Great.
Picking it up at E1.
Quit wearing stuff out, we don't have time for that.
All right.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else have anything for the good of the organization? Is there a motion or adjournment?
We can look at that.
Oh.
We haven't really had any request, well, we had a request to do it.
But I didn't know if it went any farther, that's why I asked Nick.
I don't think we did, that was.
He needed to do anything about the request, close the alley or.
He's not coming with anything.
Well, he did, but he only had one car.
Yeah, that's what I mean, yeah. That's what I mean. He's not coming with anything, like he's got it done or his work done. That's got to be done first before it comes to us to ask to do it.
Yeah, they have to give notice.
Yes.
But the other part of it.
And then we would decide whether to do or not.
Yeah.
But the other part of it, he's asking you to ask to remove all his trash and leftover.
You want us to take action on that?
Well, that I definitely know he wants something now, because he's, he's hired a survey, a survey.
So.
To keep it healthy.
So we don't know, I mean, I, I can't say I don't know until the survey is done if that's actually in our right-of-way or not.
Okay.
So do we need to see a survey first, Bruce, or Nick, to see if that stuff needs to come out of there if it's on our right-of-way?
Where's this heard at?
It's the alley that runs all the way north and south through Bridgeton. You turn on Webster Street, and it's from there south to the north property line at the end of town, which is Matthew's property.
So we still regulate based by ordinance.
Well, there's an alley that.
If, even if it's not in our right-of-way, our nuisance-related stuff.
But I'm saying it's exactly straight in line all the way through town, you know, plat book, and when you cross the road there into the alley, that's what you see is.
Right.
The pile of leftover trash from the Bridgeton.
Do we need to have him survey it first to make sure it is in the alley?
Well, even if it isn't, we could make it be cleaned up based on ordinance-related.
Really? Even if it was on his property?
Yeah.
I guarantee it's not.
We've got some ugly, got some ugly properties on the county we let go.
I know, but the.
It'd be hard for me to pick on one without picking on all of them.
That's.
But if it's in our alley, I'm perfectly fine with it.
All right. If it's on our alley, then that's fine. But yeah, as far as the petition to close the alleyway, though, we have to have proof of service on the surrounding adjacent property, or any property that's affected by the closure. So anybody would.
That's exactly what the letter.
Yeah.
Or what.
And so then you just need the green card shown that they received service of it. But yeah, i- if it's in our right-of-way, we can definitely make them clean it up, so. I just don't know what the right-of-ways out there are, so.
Yeah, see, yeah, that's what I was getting at. So we want to have Matthew do the survey? Does he want?
He's already called the survey.
Okay.
He's already.
If he would share the information with us to show that it is in our, I have no heart.
He will, because he's willing to pay for it, because what the deal is, his north property line, of course, runs east and west, and you've got his fence line for his animals, and you've got a creek, then his house and block, he can't get there to maintain his fence. Because the alley stops at that end of his property.
I don't think we have any intention of banning the alley.
That's the only reason you want it.
Clean it up, I need to make sure that stuff's in the alley.
Yeah, I mean, if that's where you feel comfortable with, then yeah.
That'd be my comfort.
Because otherwise you're opening a box I don't think I can ever close.
Yes.
And I'll, I'll just tell him to.
Can we do that then?
Yeah, we'll wait till the survey's.
Have him bring it to us and show us that that is our alleyway, and we can just demand it to be cleaned out.
He will.
Okay. If that works for you.
I'm with me.
Okay.
I'd make a motion with adjournment.
I'll second. All in favor, say aye.
I would just tell you.